Call over the, uh, our meetings here will start off with a public hearing on proposed local law. It's amendment to the village code allowing video conference pursuing the New York State open law meetings. Does anyone wish to comment in this proposed, on this proposed local law?
I'm going to motion that we open the public hearing.
Hey, why don't we do that first? Thank you. Moved by Matt, second by Francis, all those in favor of opening the public hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, carry. So now, is there anyone that wants to comment?
It's a good thing we formally opened that.
It is, generally.
Handle the, the bad rush.
Chaos, for sure. Seeing no comments, I forget, do we go right to proposed resolution or should I close? I'll take the motion to close the public hearing. So move. Trusty LeBeere, second by trustee Carville, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carried. After hearing that rousing comments, I'll accept the resolution, if you will, or motion to proposed resolution to amend the village code allowing video conference. So move. Second by LeBeere, second from this. Once then, discussion?
Is this going to be like moved on forever or is there a date that this kind of sunsets or?
Twenty twenty-four, it, excuse me, expires. If it's something we choose to continue to do, we can do so. And this actually only applies to the board of trustees meetings, not planning, zoning, joint rec, um, those other subcommittees. If it's something that a lot of them don't use this function now, so.
I just wanted to feel like the, the vote goes on forever or is there a sunset? Thank you.
Anything else? This is proposed resolution, it's a roll call vote. Trustee Winston.
Aye.
Trustee Carville.
Aye.
Trustee LeBeere.
Aye.
And I am aye.
Thank you.
Uh, now we'll move into the official, um, uh, monthly meeting for the trustees, um, I want to approve the minutes first. I want to do roll call first. I forgot roll call. Trustee Winston.
Yeah.
Trustee Carville.
Here.
Trustee LeBeere.
Here.
I'm here, and unfortunately trustee Simpson is flat on his back with COVID. He texted me at about five and said, I don't think I can make it here to meet. And so for Chad to do that, that's, uh, so Chad's excused, so anyway.
That may be as quickly.
Yeah, yeah, and he's, he's maxed out and everything as well, so it's, geez, I had it, and that just had it, it's, uh, it's.
Time is voidable.
Yeah, it is. So, anyhow, on with the meeting, so entertaining a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes for April twenty-sixth and May seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Motion by trustee Winston, second.
Second.
Second by trustee LeBeere. Any additions, deletions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, on to reports, treasurer's report.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I believe I've got everybody their reports down in their bins for the month. Uh, remember, I did include May as of where it's at right now. Change, uh, I included here is the summary of where we are at for the year-to-date for twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, this does not include sales tax accrual. Uh, I will be contacting, uh, the county here in the next couple of days to see if I can get a preliminary, uh, number before they officially pay us for it in the first of August, so that I can get that number and get that crew. The second section is where we are at, twenty-two to twenty-three, uh, for this fiscal year. Uh, just getting started, obviously, so it's going to change a lot with the year. Uh, I did not get time to get the rescue squad activity, uh, for the year-to-date. I started working on it and ran out of time, so, uh, I'll try and have that updated for the next month. Uh, would break me into the next topic, number four. Uh, I have not had time to work on any year-end adjustments yet, or the A U D hasn't started yet. Um, hopefully starting that here shortly. Uh, I don't know, I'll make the July thirty-first deadline for the joint rec A U D. Uh, it is pretty quick, but I still have a number of approvals I have to do, my payroll, those kind of things, so, uh, I'm not sure I'm going to make that one on time. Uh, number five, through the closing business on July fifteenth, we collected five million six fifty-seven, three ninety-five for in taxes. Uh, approximately eighty-three percent of the total adjusted warrant of six million eight hundred thousand three forty-three. So we are at approximately eighty-two percent, uh, collected through the same time last year, so we're a little bit ahead this year compared to last. Mortgage tax was received June sixteenth, eighteen thousand eight thirty-four, which was down from twenty-two thousand two seventy-two from last year. Uh, we also made the bond payment, uh, for the Center Street Harper Ave, Superline's bond, amount of pretty five thousand dollars principal and nine thousand two twenty-two interest. Uh, and then as of today, we received just over five hundred and some thousand dollars for the Harper bonds. So this should conclude our second payment, uh, of all we're going to get, so. It is sitting on a balance sheet item, uh, at this point, and then as we, um, are using it and doing efforts to move it out and put it to revenue to offset the expense.
I like that. Uh, I sincerely apologize, we forgot to do the pledge. I, I'm so sorry, but I'd like to do it still. Forgive me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My apologies again, I'm so sorry. My son smacked me upside the head.
Never talk, that's for safe.
Let me start over. I know. Treasurers report, what's going on? Uh, committee reports we'll go into. Uh, code enforcement, Francis and Matt?
I have a couple of discussion items that might lead to something, but nothing currently.
Okay, thank you. Economic development, Matt?
Yes, so attended the B D C meeting this past Wednesday. Um, it is likely the last official B D C board meeting with the current board members. Um, as everyone is probably aware, a few years back, the village shifted, instead of funding B D C, we went with funding grant writing and community development efforts to work in conjunction with economic development efforts that the town was personally with the B D C. Um, this year, the town pulled their funding from the B D C, so their executive director, Jim Murphy, um, will be exiting, um, they won't have the, the funding to maintain a full-time executive director. The board has committed to staying on, um, to get things in order, um, the various legalities that they had, the new audits and whatnot. Um, so I personally want to thank, uh, the board, especially all the members have been invaluable, but the long-term members. I've been on this board now seven and a half plus years, and, um, Dan was on the B D C board, Dan Pease well before my time, so, you know, you think about volunteering your time, um, there's some great people on that board, so I just wanted to acknowledge their efforts and say thank you, and this board will have to get together, I'm sure the mayor and supervisor are already talking about it, but, uh, figure out the next step for the two entities in terms of economic development, um, in what shape the B D C can or would take, if any, in those efforts about.
Sue and I did a meeting with Dan Pease, and we had a preliminary discussion, and Sue was asked some of the B D C members to stay on and help brainstorm about, you know, how we're going to approach this, and there's a few ideas going, but nothing concrete, but obviously we'll keep everybody posted with what's going forward.
And then, real quick, also under there, because we don't have it at the end, um, you do have the branding initiative report, um, to take a look at, um, really, really impressive work continuing there, um, they've been working on commercials, um, so you want to talk about economic development, it goes hand in hand in promoting our area, promoting our community, um, and Jason in H three Designs is doing an amazing job, so if you haven't checked that report out, please do so, and then our administrator also met, um, with town board representatives and H three Designs in regards to the website, the government website that we have, and they're going to be looking to rebrand that, simplify it, and rebrand it so it's consistent with our tourism recreation website.
Super, thank you. Fire committee?
You got anything? Status quo, I've been busy over there, status quo.
Super, thank you. Uh, police committee?
Personnel as well.
Whoops, sorry, forgot personnel. Personnel?
I attended interviews on Monday, but no proposed action at this time.
Okay, thank you. Police committee?
Uh, Dr. Chief, uh, I want to thank him and the guys for, uh, taking some more, uh, fentanyl off the street in the bus the other day, so, uh, that's all I have, unless the chief had anything he'd like to bring up.
I appreciate it, thank you for giving us a shout out, but I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, rec commission?
We attended a rec meeting, uh, last week.
Yeah, July twelfth, you can start.
Okay. Uh, summer recreation, there's four locations, they're back to, I guess, what you could call normal, uh, after last year when they were at one location. The first week, they had to provide lunch for the participants because the school hadn't ramped up yet for that, but now the school is providing a free lunch to the participants of the summer recreation. Uh, street hockey tournament, uh, was, uh, six twenty, we had sixteen teams, it went well. And for the soccer registration, they already have over five hundred signed up, and they got a new division this year, it's the pre-k to three. Uh, there's a limit to twenty-four children for that, and they also have the grades nine and ten. And through the tennis court project, uh, Oki Tennis Court, should be done with it now unless you add some.
Yeah, and it lasts.
There was supposed to be better, like, started last Tuesday and was supposed to be done by the end of the week. And, um, doing more?
Sure, yeah, there's a dog training course happening, Brenna Nezza's on, so you can sign up for that, but I actually think it's filled, um, but she might be opening more courses after that. There was a breast cancer tournament, women's softball, July sixteenth and seventeenth. Um, the frog jumping contest is July twenty-first at nine thirty, they expect fifty to seventy-five kids for that, and, or the, not July first, right? Yeah, okay. That's all.
Rescue squad, we'll be talking more about the ambulance purchase, uh, coming up in our old business, um, calls are still high and squad is still busy. Um, yeah, it's, uh, any else, Eric?
Aye.
Just doing a great job over there. Really. Uh, street committee?
The D P W has been busy making Messina look nice, keeping everything mowed and trimmed, sweeping streets, picking up brush, working on hot patching, pouring new sidewalks and curbs, applying fresh mulch on downtown trees, cleaning the walkways, and as far as water, they've been flushing valves, doing stakeouts, curb boxes, um, there was a water leak on North Racket, and that has been taken care of and repaired, water main break on state, um, Route one thirty-one.
Kind of like that, so.
Go ahead.
Updates on the streets.
Sure.
Okay, so right now, with the extra, like, fifty-eight thousand that we received in pop funds through chips, uh, we actually added Stoughton from Maine to Beach to resurface, uh, curbs and sidewalk turning are pretty good shape there, so that should be in and out pretty quick. We're going to add Garvin from Maine to Highland, um, that needs a, uh, is that the one? Right, you're by Tim Martin's.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, Marty, I might have been cursing you a few times this winter.
That's good, thank you.
And, uh, obviously Churchill from Panthers to Westwood, um, right now on Martin Street, we've, uh, pretty much got the sidewalks topped, soiled in, did a shim coat, actually ready for top, longer than Stoughton, um, we've milled Clark Street Churchill, um, and Rosebrier, Rosebrier, we're going to be adding additional catch basins and underdrain behind the curb to help catch some of that water coming down the hill behind those houses. Owl Labs, we're still looking at doing storm systems later in the year, water infrastructure, the materials, doesn't look like it'll hit here probably till January or February, so we'll do the, uh, storm system, patch it up, get us through the winter. Um, with that being said, that money, I'm looking at possibly doing something on a section of South Racket, um, I know, because the town does plow that, and it's, it's pretty bad out there in a section of South Racket, so like to do, I'm not going to go forward to do the whole thing, if we can do half of it, that would be, get us through the area for next year. Uh, next thing is the paper, um, old paper, the one that we purchased last year, the, uh, electronics will not, they're not compatible, will not go to the paper that we bought last year, in order to get electronics, you're talking sixty to seventy, seventy thousand dollars. So when we, when we do parker, I might reach out to a contractor to, you know, just from what you guys are telling me, a little, little iffy, uh, if that paper will get us through.
And you're going to reach out and with the C S E A and?
Yeah, and I actually, I actually spoke to.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, um, the extra money chips for anyone who doesn't know consolidated highway improvement program?
Yes.
Just don't want anyone to think pop money was something else. We are not getting any revenue.
Yeah, it's just another, you got, yeah.
I knew what you meant, but just in case.
And also, so go right into the waters. So on the, uh, the river crossing, um, underwater specialists, they located, removed the section of water main, took them three days, helped with the village crew on the shore to assist. After flushing and testing procedures were completed, approved by D O H, the line is now back in service. That price tag on that was about a little over eleven thousand dollars. Uh, still in hopes that, uh, with New York State D O T and D O H, uh, they'll give us permission to upgrade the distribution system in that area with the bridge crossing and other areas there, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Pretty much have water and sewer at the same time, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Thank you. So now is our initial public comment period, anyone wishing to address the board, please do so, state your name, leave your comments to four or five minutes. Anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Um, the first discussion item is the village vehicle usage, uh, and that was actually passed out, I don't know if everybody has a copy of it themselves, um, I have one here. Um, I don't, there's no plan to take action on this tonight, I think what we just really want to have is a discussion on, on what you see there, and then the plan would be after the discussion, anything else that goes back to the committee, they'll come back with the actual recommendation to update the village policy on vehicle usage, and that would be passed at the next board meeting. So I'll open it up for any discussion. Christie, you want to start us off?
Sure, yeah, so Chad and Aaron talked with, um, department heads and kind of got their take, I was responsible for contacting other villages, um, of varying sizes, some smaller than ours, some larger than ours, to kind of get their take on what they're doing. It sounds like the majority of places are allowing certain police vehicles to be taken home if those people are on call, if it's a chief, um, to help with emergency situations. Some villages are allowing D P W superintendent to bring a vehicle home, so looking at the same things that we are. Um, I think it's just important that we add a few detailed things in here, so if police are taking vehicles home, just to make sure it's in our policy that those vehicles are locked in a locked garage, um, as a safety precaution, making sure that if people are taking vehicles home, it's not any further than five miles outside of the village, so we're not having to worry about extra gas and mileage. So we just, I guess, need to go through what, what do we each want to allow, or what, how far do we want to go with this? I know, Francis, you have some concerns about liability, so we should talk about that as well. Um, Aaron, do you have anything you want to add with the statement or with what we're looking to change to the policy?
No, I just, I think that we took a, uh, as a group, we looked at necessity and convenience, and I know, you know, we discussed, and the board discussed with the release program, how to reduce the mileage and still minimize any type of impact it would have on the community.
What was the most comparable village or cities that you attacked to us?
I would say Plattsburgh, and I have a list of the size of each population, but Plattsburgh...
Does Plattsburgh consider their police detectives on call, and do they take vehicles home?
Yes, they do. They also, many of them, including Plattsburgh, have a policy at the mayor's discretion, and so many of the people that I spoke to described it as, say, there's a situation, uh, for example, maybe like a, um, like a drug bust or something like that, that they know, or a murder situation they expect, they can allow more vehicles to go home that night, you know? So if you add something like mayor's discretion, that's sometimes they do that.
Um, one thing the policy doesn't seem to address, and it's going to sound minor, but I think is of critical importance, the recording of mileage at the time of fuel fill-ups. So I've looked at at least six months' worth of those logs. By all means, everything looks in order in terms of the amount of gas being pumped, not suggesting any issue there by any means, however, the mileage is clearly not accurately recorded. There's no way every fill-up, for some people, the mileage is ending on a zero. There's certainly no way the mileage is going down on a subsequent fill-up than it was at the prior time. So I think the policy needs to actually state that any driver, not just at home, but anyone that's using a village vehicle that is filling up, is required to put the accurate detailed mileage when they fill up the log, because it's, that is what everyone sitting here has to look at for vehicle usage. We can't go around to every vehicle and what's on your odometer, you know, so when I look at the logs and I see, you know, seventeen thousand five hundred, next fill-up, seventeen thousand six hundred, next fill-up, seventy thousand seven hundred, there's no way, it's not a real mileage, it's an approximate, they got busy, they didn't pay attention, they pumped the gas, they got back and, oh crap, I know it's around seventeen thousand, you know, so they put something in. I get it, it's, it's tempting, you know, you, you want to do your job, you want to get out there and finish the project you're working on, you don't want to be filling out a log, but I think it's of critical importance that we, as a board, put in a policy that it's required that you put the accurate detailed odometer reading when you're filling up as a policy.
I can't remember which, um, village I spoke to, but someone has technology that they can view mileage and, um, like a geotracker, do we have that, anything from the police station that you can view each car at any given time from your laptop?
Oh, and I'm not talking police specific, I'm actually not talking.
Right, I'm just saying, it was someone that had, somebody had mentioned to me that they have.
We have, we have GPS where we can, we can see where the car is located on a, basically a Google map.
Okay.
But it doesn't give us any specifics as far as what the mileage is at.
On the vehicle.
Geotag.
Yes, that's what it was.
I think that the lease company, I think, has that.
Yes, just going straight, that will be. They, they, they can bring up all your, it'll tell you everything, it's the brain of that vehicle.
Right, so that way you don't have to have someone inputting information to do it.
So perhaps the policy is for vehicles not equipped, so it covers you for the future if you have a vehicle that's equipped. For vehicles not equipped with automatic mileage tracking, employees must log the accurate mileage, not the approximate.
Let me double check with that, Matt, because I think every car that we have is going to have a geotag, the only discrepancies will lie for the police, because it can tell us who's driving the vehicle pretty hard, and we all kind of know, I think we all said, well, we don't need to know if the police are driving the vehicle hard, we assume it's going to be driven harder than we want.
Right, and there's an issue.
But let me double check to make sure that the.
Yeah, there's an issue with GPS locating detective vehicles, because it's discoverable information in court, you know, when it comes to working with confidential informants.
Sure.
Because I was going, I was going to equip them until the district attorney's office had a conversation with me, and I wasn't aware of that.
I think it's definitely a move in the right direction. I personally would go further, but I also understand we're a five-member board, and go with the, the collective thinking of the group, and I don't think there would be support to go as far as I would like to go, but this is a definite move in the right direction, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I think.
Go ahead.
I brought this up to start with a few, a few months ago, and, uh, this wasn't new, uh, I've been on the board for, uh, fourteen years, and I brought this up one of the first years I was on this board of, uh, committee vehicles. We're very lenient in this community compared to any other community in St. Lawrence County. Uh, if you want to look for a comparable community, you probably can go with Augsburg, uh, they, uh, about the same size, uh, they have probably about the same problems, uh, big problem with drugs, the drug itself might be a little different, like, it's, it's a big drug problem. They, they bring their vehicles in, they pull them in at nighttime, they don't allow them all over everywhere, uh, Plattsburgh doesn't allow vehicles, can't, they only allow us one or wherever, and, uh, it's just a, we have, it's uncontrolled here, there's just too many vehicles going home, and, uh, to me, control of this is to take them home, I mean, it's just, it's, I had one for many years, I know, and for me, it was a pain, because no matter, when I got home, no matter where I put it, it was always in the wrong place. I had to move it, every time I turned around, I had to move it, and there's no real advantage to having that thing at, at my house, really, when I got right down to it. I didn't use it for my own personal use, so therefore it was stuck in my yard, and in the wintertime, if I got called during an ice storm, the village truck was all iced up, my truck was sitting in the garage, the window was clear, I can just take off of mine, but I had to sit there and run the village's truck for how long, and took the foggy windows out to get to, to get it so I could take it down the road, changing, you know, and the snow started, so. And it's a, it's a quite a perk to have a vehicle to take home. I mean, we don't, uh, anyway, the, a lot of places that have that, that type of perk, they, uh, it's a, uh, when it comes income tax time, there's a form that has to be filled out and that has to be put down as, um, you know, as income, because that's basically what it is, because, you know, it's nice to have a vehicle where you don't have to pay the insurance, you don't have to pay the payments, you can fill up the gas if you want, it's just a great deal, you know? And, uh, we're such a small community, why do we need it? That's what I get, you know? I go on the back, I mean, it's just a, I, I can't see, you know, I'm going to say that, you know, there's all kinds of excuses, I've heard them way back forty years, I've heard why we should have vehicles to drive home, there's not exactly one or a bunch, there's not exactly, not one that really, that could justify a vehicle taken home, because if you want to justify it, all the other communities are not doing it, so why are we different?
Well, the communities in St. Lawrence County aren't, but a lot of the communities in the state are, that are similar size and demographic of Messina. I mean, I don't think we should have anyone bring up vehicle home, but certain people need to, so they can respond to crime in a timely manner.
So when a call comes in with a crime being committed, aren't the four or five men and women down there the first ones to respond?
Yeah.
So we need five additional cars at home?
Or a police chief, or lieutenant that may not be here.
And three detectives.
That may not be here.
Right.
That may not be on the call.
But when the crime's being committed, the first responders are the four or five men and women down there.
But we want those people to be there too, we want the chief to be there so he can make the call on what needs to happen, what if it's an active, sure situation.
I agree, I would think taking the vehicle from the chief. Wholeheartedly agree. But we have five, we don't have one, we have five vehicles going home in addition to the four or five men or women that'll be downstairs. in addition to the four or five men or women that'll be downstairs.
I respectfully, I disagree. I, I'm, I would be less comfortable if those five didn't have vehicles. And I'm willing to take on any liability. I'm willing to take on any additional risks, because I believe that right now, in this time and place, we need as many officers available at the drop of a hat, whenever. And I realize it's a difference in opinion, but that, that's how I view it, so I'm very comfortable with, with the policeman having that. I, I think it's vital for this community to have that, I mean, I'm not gonna get into the nationalism and all that, but that's just my mindset. I, I want them to be able to be there five seconds quicker if need be. That's, that's just my mindset.
As we have in our statement, a delay in response can mean the difference between life and death, so we want to take, we want to air this side of the debate.
You could use that sentiment to make the argument, we need ten officers on duty at all times.
If we can afford it, I would.
Which is the argument we're talking about long-term, is can the taxpayers afford it when you don't get the equity on these vehicles? So.
But have we ever had, I'm sorry, I don't know what I'm talking. Any of the current officers that we have that take home, has there ever been an issue with any of the current officers on force right now that take home vehicles?
One, yes.
Was it addressed?
Yes, it was, yeah. Yes, it was. And, you know, just, the detectives having the vehicles, um, their, their function's a little different. One of the things that wasn't mentioned is that, you know, um, collection of evidence due whether that's outside is, 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 it's, it's a timely thing. Because evidence can deteriorate, because a lot of times evidence is made up of biological material. So, you know, depending on what type of weather we have, time is of the essence to make sure that we can collect that evidence before that evidence is destroyed. If we don't have evidence, we can't support cases, we can't win cases in court, we can't hold people accountable. So that's a function that I think has been missed. Women want to discuss why detectives have take-home vehicles?
Um, a couple of other things. I don't see the superintendent address, and I don't see fire. Fire slash code. I know you guys don't currently have a vehicle to take home. We do have a vehicle though. To me, it makes sense to cover in a policy in case, I mean, administrations change, boards change, supervisors change. If suddenly we see the fire vehicle at home and it's not addressed in the policy, it just would make sense if we're gonna cover. A policy covered in all departments, all departments should be covered, so, um, so whatever language you come up with, I'd like to know what you're recommending for fire and what you're recommending for the superintendent. Then the other thing, I mentioned this to Chad, um, last month, was I personally think there should be some type of policy. Once that vehicle is here in the village, that start of your workday should only be used for village business. If you're going on lunch, you should not be going on a twenty-mile trip.